I'd like to call to order the August 20th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Semirusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowan?
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Ms. Peter Bono?
Here.
Mr. Rose Levich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIB reports, the superintendent's contract, and a personnel matter. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJS 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I please get a motion to convene to closed session?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We ensure that going along the whole way.
Well, we will, yeah, we'll definitely track the data and see which students are getting in and see if we do see that it is becoming more equitable. We are working on, we haven't hired the Advanced Learning Specialist yet, she's on the agenda tonight, so we wanted her to have an input into this, and the committee is meeting in September before all the multiple measures, because that was one of the things we went back on, which are we, are we giving more weight to one of the multiple measures than the other? How are we mapping it out when we see the data? And again, it's hard, because this is the first year of it, so we don't have any preliminary data, this is going to be the first time we're going through this, and we're probably going to hit some roadblocks and see that maybe some things aren't working, but the committee will meet throughout the year and monitor how it's going.
Who's on the committee, by the way? I'm sorry, that was another question. Thank you.
Well, real quick, I just wanted to tell you that you just gave me an idea to do what I've had Mr. Lasseter do, which is to disaggregate the AP score data based on our demographics, the population of our students by demographic association. I should do the same thing with the advanced learning program, that report out like I do with the other big programs, so I'll do that.
Currently, the committee has teachers from every grade level, it was the Advanced Learning Specialist, two supervisors, and Mr. Benjamin as well.
Thank you. Everybody good?
Okay. Going back to the family letter and input survey, what's the overall procedure so that you don't have a certain segment of families, you know, like saying, "Oh, okay, let's get this in," as opposed to getting it from the district overall?
So it will be sent to every family, we will have it translated so that our populations, everyone can read and understands it and fill it out. We will send out reminders. I don't know if we can get it in Genesis, one of the things was to also put it in Genesis with all of the letters, but that's something I'm working on, to see if we can do that with all the other forms that they have to fill out, so that maybe there's a better chance that we will get the information from the majority of parents.
And that is just one component of many components as to how students would filter into this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only one piece of it.
Okay.
It's not going to exclude it.
I want to point out that Vaitse Maria Belber on the agenda, who we are recommending be the specialist, she happens to have dual certification, special ed as well as general education, which we think would be helpful as she differentiates in the push-in environment, both pull-out environment. Are there other questions? If not, I thank you so much. She took such ownership over this program, and you know it in and out, and I was very impressed myself, so I'm going to send Ms. Knapp home, because it's a long week or two, she's going to be facilitating new teacher workshops all next week, and then we hit the ground running the week after that, so please go home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Want to shift gears from academic support to social, emotional, and behavioral support. I'm going to hand out two things. One, the New Jersey Department of Education Student Safety Data System Guidance Booklet, that's the SSDS book, I think I emailed this to everybody as well, but, so you have it for tonight, it's coming in paper form, and then copies of our Code of Conduct, which you've seen numerous times, but here it is again, you can refer to it. So the reason why we talk about managing behaviors when we discuss the Code of Conduct is because we didn't look at our codes of conduct as means to correct violations against our discipline code, as much as we did a way to help kids self-regulate, enhance their interpersonal skills with each other, provide them all the direction they need as they test the boundaries all the way through high school, what they can and can't do, they're growing up and they're learning about what it is to become independent in this world. I just realized that Ms. Knapp took my pointer.
Oh, no.
Here it is. So let me first begin by giving you some background on the process. A group called the Discipline Study Group spent 15 months examining our existing Code of Conduct, or what was the existing Code of Conduct, and then we completely revamped it. There were, at almost, in almost all meetings, 18 contributors, including several students from the middle and the high school, who, by the way, I thought were a nice cross-representation of the diversity of our community as well, and we had three board members who represent the Equity and Excellence Committee. Now, this group not only worked side by side after school, we spent a full day in May just putting the wraps on our work, we also attended conferences, there's a shot of our group, including two students who attended a workshop led by Ann Gregory, whose name I'll mention a few times in the next couple of minutes, which was all about discipline equity. So the folks involved in this process ended up coming together, not only around the Code of Conduct and its revamp, but also around the thinking of a vision for how we're going to help kids grow, not just what we do if they break the rules. These are some shots of both board members and principals, teachers, and students working together side by side to produce what I just handed out. The Code of Conduct for every school is somewhat based on a model built in the Syracuse City School District. Why Syracuse? Well, a couple of reasons. One, they've been at the approach of integrating restorative practices with accountability for years. They worked with Ann Gregory, Ann is, as you know, a resident, a parent in our school district, and also a leading expert in the area of both restorative practices and discipline equity. She worked with Syracuse, so it was natural for us to look to them as a model around which we could build our Code of Conduct. We tried very hard in, as we enter our second year of a three-year implementation plan for restorative practices at the middle and high school, to build that language in to the codes while at the same time marrying the need for accountability. One thing that Dr. Gregory has emphasized is that restorative practices isn't a way of disciplining students, it's a way of building community for the adults and the kids, and when married with accountability measures can help guide kids, can help them grow. So what you're going to see in the Codes of Conduct, I handed out, and this will be available, I'll place this on the websites tomorrow, both the, all-school websites, it'll be under the Quick Links drop-down menu. You will see, for every school, a system of responses that we will incorporate when kids violate one of the codes. Every school has a different set of these four levels that is specifically suited for the maturity level of the student. Every one of these levels, and I'm zooming in on just an example of the high schools, Level 1 and 2, which are the lowest levels of response, Levels 3 and 4 being the highest levels, every level incorporates restorative practice language. For instance, as is the case with the high school, we are careful with Level 1 response. Student acts out, let's say he's disruptive in class, sent to the assistant principal. We will be speaking with that student and talking a lot with him or her about how whatever action took place to disrupt the class affected people, not only the students, peers, but also the teacher or other adults in the class. By the way, our assistant principal at the high school just completed four days of restorative practice training, and she's going to be going back to IIRP for the second level of training, so she can then be a trainer, attorney trainer. Our safety specialist, Sean Harrison, was also trained during those four days. The process of developing these Codes of Conduct, as I said, took 15 months, I go back to March of 2017. We spent three meetings in 2017 before the summer, just talking as a group, very honestly and openly, about relationships, student-teacher relationships. Students around the table talked about how they connected better with teachers, they liked teachers who respected them, who talked with them, not at them, who rolled with them in cases when they were angry or had a bad day. In other words, I didn't just look at their situations as black and white, there were gray areas. We spent three one-and-a-half-hour meetings, at least one or two occasions, it probably went two hours, I don't recall, but they were very lengthy, rich meetings, in which we openly discussed relationships and biases, biases that the kids were noticing, our teachers and other adults, whether conscious or subconscious, they feel may have influenced the way they were treating them and how they were using the Code, back then, existing Code of Conduct. Then in September of this past school year, September 2017, we spent a lot of time coming up with a vision as a group of 18. Well, what did we, what kind of language do we want in this Code of Conduct? What does we want it to look like? We used the Syracuse model as on the side there, we would look at it from time to time. We actually had a teacher with us, whose sister works in Syracuse, who was giving us some input about the, some of the challenges that they were experiencing, one of which is, and it's a real takeaway for us, that they apparently are experiencing in Syracuse, is that the teachers in those schools are not being trained in how to leverage the Code of Conduct. In other words, it seems that in at least a few of the schools up there, according to this person, Syracuse put it out there and then may not have done a lot of follow-up to be sure that teachers fully understood, you know, when to send a student to the assistant principal, when to work with a situation in-house, in a classroom, when, and when and how to use restorative practices language when trying to cool down a student who might be very frustrated, very upset. And then about November, we started to hit the books, and we started to develop charts like you see in the finished product, that that took us all the way to May. Sometime after May, I shared the Codes of Conduct with members of the board, full board, got some input from them. I then shared it with our board attorney, because one of the things I do want to point out, as you can see, on the right side of each chart, of each Code of Conduct violation chart, we actually incorporated checklist columns to indicate when certain violations of the Code of Conduct would call for us to refer the incident to the state as part of the SSDS reporting system, which I'll going to explain in a couple of minutes, and when, if at all, we had to contact law enforcement. So we spent a lot of time working with various individuals, including our board attorney, to get guidance, so that we knew how to very correctly and accurately indicate when certain things should be referred in these two cases. So let me just point out that in the past, the previous iterations of the Code of Conduct, we didn't have these columns, we just kind of did it based on our knowledge, based on experience. If we felt something should be referred to law enforcement, we would pick up the phone and contact Officer Joe. Now what we're doing is we're explicitly stating what should be and what shouldn't be referred to law enforcement or should be reported for SSDS reporting. And it's been my job to hold the leadership team accountable for being sure that we're actually following these Codes of Conduct. Of course, the other difference between the current Code of Conduct that I'm sharing with you and the previous versions, we've very, very specifically laid out what violations will constitute the different levels of response, and that's being done consistently now from Irving all the way up to high school senior year. Now, speaking of reporting, I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about a concern that has come up from some members of our community and board about what we report, how we report it. There are two primary reporting systems in all of our schools. At least one school has another layer of reporting, Bartle, and I'll talk about that in a second. The two primary streams of reporting are, one, to the state as required and framed by the guideline book that I shared with the board, and also internally through our student information system, Genesis. The SSDS report requires us to refer all the incidences that I've listed up on this slide, and just these incidences, to an electronic system. Now, all information we share is anonymous in that we do not share student names or student ID numbers, the state does not get hold of that information. What it does want is demographic information, ethnicity, race, gender, doesn't ask for socioeconomic status, ELL status, if the student is getting English as a second language services, and of course, the nature of the incident and the category of the incident. And the state's doing this, as the guideline book points out, because it's being imposed upon by the federal government to report out statistics. And by the way, the New Jersey media does publish these statistics when the Department of Education puts its data out every year. That, all that data on violence, vandalism, and fighting, and HIB, that you read about in the Star Ledger, or the Record, and the Philadelphia Inquirer that reports in South Jersey, that's all coming out of this reporting system, the SSDS reporting system. But again, I need to emphasize that we are not sharing student names or ID numbers. This is an example, and I want to show the community, even the board can read more of these examples in the back, of a scenario that the guideline book presents to administrators who refer to the guideline book for some guidance. There are several scenarios that the state presents, I'll let you read this one to yourself, to give us a better idea as to what should be reported and what shouldn't. So here's a scenario referring to what looks like an assault or a fight between two kids in kindergarten, and what the state is suggesting is that we report this as an assault, and explains why. Had a weapon been used, and we're talking about kindergarten, nevertheless, had a weapon been used, i.e. a stick, or, I mean, something bigger than a stick, like, I don't know, a big rock, maybe, then we would have to report this as an assault with weapon. It does not discriminate by age group. This is a scenario coming straight out of the Department of Education's Guidebook, and it refers to a kindergarten situation. Now, I need to point out, this is the definition of assault, according to the State Department of Education on the screen here. What we've done in Highland Park internally is we have, rather than just go with a blanket, one-sentence statement that defines assault, we've actually broken out what we think assault is. There could be, I guess you could refer to it as simple assault, we don't call it that, we call it something else. In other words, a student hits another student but doesn't cause bodily harm, we actually have a category just for that. Then we have another category for assault with bodily harm, then we have another category, I believe, a third category, assault with a weapon. What we've done is we've tried to provide shades to the definition of assault in our four-school Codes of Conduct, as opposed to just sticking with the one blanket statement. I do want to come back to the second incident reporting system, and that's the internal reporting system. As I pointed out, we do keep records of student violations of Code of Conduct in Genesis, we do it for a number of reasons. This is, by the way, an example of a student's conduct record in Genesis from last year. I've zoomed in on it, so you can get a sense of what we incorporate, we put the date of the incident, the infraction, and what action may have been taken. Let me clarify what goes into an incident report, what does it, what we use it for. First of all, incident reports that we keep in-house and Genesis don't go anywhere else, they stay right here. If a student transfers to another district, we don't send the conduct report to that district. If a student, when a student graduates, we don't give it to anybody at that point, it's just for our use. Why? No, a couple of reasons. One, because just like we keep academic performance information on a student, so we could tell the story of a student's academic progress or regressions, so what must we do so in the case of behavior? We have several resources for students in the different schools. For instance, the teen center at the middle and high school sometimes needs information to be able to adapt its counseling strategies based on the history of misbehaviors. We can tell, for instance, if we track some of this information internally, if things have regressed, if the behaviors are getting more severe, if there's some commonality in the behaviors. Oh, we have a student who appears to be harassing mostly kids of the opposite sex, number of HIB reports have come up. We use that information so that we can help the student redirect his or her behavior and self-regulate behavior as well. We also use the information in case we have to unfortunately place the student in an alternative out-of-district placement, which was at least a situation we had last year in one case. Those schools may ask us for information, and we may need to share something with them based on the information we're tracking internally in order to help them support the student. The information that we keep in Genesis is tucked away year after year, we do not roll over the information from one year to the next. So for instance, in this next school year, every conduct file in Genesis is wiped clean. We do not take everything that happened, like this student's report from last year, and just roll it over to the next year. We archive it, we keep it in the past, but that's only accessible by administrators, not by teachers. It's a blank slate each year. The other incident, the other reporting system I did allude to earlier is that which takes place at Bartle. Some schools that I've worked in keep their own records or have their own protocol, their own process, so they could manage referrals that teachers may make about kids who are misbehaving. At Bartle, they use paper slips, since the teachers can't go into Genesis directly, and so if they have a concern about a student or an issue with a student, they'll write something on a slip that they use, a referral slip, and they'll either, they'll hand it to the main office, and then somebody at the main office will pick it up and work with it. Could be a counselor, could be the student and staff teacher support person, it could be the principal, it could be our mental health specialist, Regina Strenger, who sometimes makes her way up to Bartle, even though she's based at Irving. So that's their way at Bartle of just keeping track of the incidences, since the teachers don't report directly into Genesis. We do hold on to those referral forms. Any incident that we record in Genesis, or that might be recorded on the yellow sheet, can be retracted if a parent or guardian meets with the principal and there's an agreement that, you know what, this incident, in the end, this was just a misunderstanding, or in fact, after further investigation, they realized that facts weren't straight and the incident didn't take place, we can wipe the record. So that was a question that came up from one of our parents in the community. There may be instances in which a parent or guardian meets with the principal and they discuss a matter, and turns out that the parent guardian sheds new light on a situation, and the principal agrees, you know what, you're right, there's some new tangent to this incident, we can go into the record and we can tweak it as necessary and modify it. So I think I've covered all the bases, I can see some questions, nonverbals, speaking loudly. Ruth, did you want to ask first?
Just do parents have ongoing access to their running behavioral records that are in Genesis?
It's a good question. So parents don't have ready access to it in the parent portal, but there's nothing that would stop a parent from walking into a main office and saying, "Hey, I'd like to see my student's conduct."
Because that was one of the issues that Catherine brought.
We're not hiding this information, there is nothing.
So Scott, are you sure about that? Because I was just in Genesis today, as a matter of fact, looking to see if schedules were in there. There is a discipline tab for parents.
I'll check, I wasn't aware that there is.
Well, that's not everything.
Right.
That's like the big things that maybe require some discipline, like detention or actual suspension.
Right, because I just noticed that today, that there is a discipline tab, but I don't know what shows up there.
I don't know if we're populating yet, but I'll follow up with that.
There's nothing there now, I mean, now there's nothing in Genesis, like no schedules, no anything, but there is a tab for discipline that I, as a parent, can see.
Right. Yeah, there are some things in there, but not everything. So if a parent wants to see their child's discipline portfolio, can they have access to that at any time?
Of course, of course, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, no different than if a parent wants to see his child's academic portfolio. Hey, I want to see my kid's.
Or a teen center record, you can ask your teen center, as long as your kid is under 18, you can get whatever records the district has. They're, I mean, they're.
It's your kid.
Yeah.
But could we back up one step, which is not whether a parent could take a look, but is the parent notified each time a child appears in a report or is given a yellow slip? And that's part A, and part B is, the Bartle system, the yellow slip system, is that, is it the same rules and regulations that a child would be given a yellow slip as the SSDS, or?
No, 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 the yellow slips are just a means of helping them keep track of incidences, so they could, there's going to be some follow-up.
But what are the incidences that generate a yellow slip, as opposed to what the incidents that would?
I think everything gets a yellow slip, and then they decide whether it gets elevated.
Correct.
If there's any kind of, if they want somebody other than a teacher to intervene, if they want the principal or a guidance counselor or whatever, write it down on the slip and...
I mean, the operation of the building.
Why do we have, why do we have, like, it sounds like three parallel systems, and at least one of the systems, which is the yellow slips, is only used in one of the buildings? And by the parent's testimony last week, and from what I've heard from other people in the community, including board members, the yellow slip system seems to be, seems to have a life of its own, and no rules that the board has heard of, which I think as a board, we should have some input. The state has input on the, on this SSDS, or whatever it's called, and we've certainly had input on our Code of Conduct with different classes, you know, 1, 2, 3.
But if the yellow slips aren't being recorded in Genesis necessarily, or in, they're not records.
They're being maintained in binders, and they're being used as a, as a.
Tracking, a way to track.
A way to keep track, and again, from the testimony that we heard, the parents said, the teachers said, "I have to report this even though it's nothing." And those weren't exact words, but they're pretty close to the exact words, and I don't understand why we have a parallel system. In fact, let's not talk about the state system, let's talk about our system. Why do we have a parallel system? Isn't our Code of Conduct good enough so that if two kids run into each other in the hallway, it sounded like you write both kids up because they bumped arms? It really sounded that way to me, and I think it sounded that way to a lot of board members.
But, well, in the Code of Conduct, though, it makes it clear, it differentiates between kids that are involved in force play, or kids that are kind of running into each other that way, they, you know, that is not a viol, it's not a, it's a Level 1 violation, but it's not, it certainly wouldn't rise to a high level. However, the same thing seems to be getting written up as a yellow piece of paper in Bartle, but it doesn't necessarily get reported to the state in SSDS. It seems like there are three different ways that each incident.
Or to the parent, or to the parents, or in Genesis.
And is the parent even finding out about it?
And used as an evaluation mechanism about the students, about the children. children. And any system like that, which is not documented and approved, and, you know, I'm not a bureaucrat, but the board, the board should have some input in this. And also, it's not the same as anything being used in any of the other schools, right?
Well, look, monitoring student behavior in the student, monitoring student behavior in the student information system is common in every district which I've worked. I don't think you're going to find-
But they're not talking about the system.
Does the high school do something similar to the yellow pieces of paper?
No, not as far as that.
Does the middle school do something? Does the Irving school does, does something? It sounds to me like they don't. So I don't understand why it's being used at all.
Can I, just because I'm trying to be clear on that, too. What you said was that Bartle uses the referral yellow slip system instead of Genesis, so it really is supposed to be their Genesis, right, in terms of the discipline reporting, correct, or incident reporting?
No, I think they do both.
They do both.
So, okay, I thought you said teachers do not have access to Genesis. That's why they use the slips.
At Bartle.
At Bartle.
Correct.
That's why.
They don't have access at Irving either, and as far as I-
The administrators would put it into Genesis.
To input the information.
So it's like, that's how the teachers get it, too. That's how the teachers get it to the main office.
So if I'm a teacher and I, okay, I'm sitting, now, I'm teaching my lesson, and all of a sudden Johnny starts throwing a pencil across the, across the classroom, being disruptive. I'm that teacher, I'm going to take my yellow slip, I'm envisioning how it's going to go, right? And I'm writing up a note about Johnny throwing a pencil, being disruptive, I'm going to keep it here, and then when, during my prep or during lunch, I'm going to bring it to the main office, and I'm going to give it to the main office. That's going to be the trigger to react to the problem.
And then the parent gets a call?
If it's severe enough to warrant some kind of disciplinary action, or yeah, it all depends on the incident. It might not if it's not something which is worth calling home about.
Scott, if the yellow sheet of paper is a mechanism for a teacher to report something that is, is part of our code of conduct, is, is a violation of the code of conduct, and that's all it's used for, and it will be guaranteed to be put into Genesis in all the proper ways we've approved and reviewed, I have no problem with it. They can use smoke signals for all I care, and they, or telex machines. But it sounded to me, and it sounds to me, like the yellow slip of paper system is an ad hoc, one-school-only system which doesn't match the code of conduct. And that concerns me.
And, and that Mr. Burton said-
The board should be, and the administration should, and superintendent should be, should be reviewing, should be approving whatever system we use. And that yellow slip of paper seems, I'm, I'm not even pointing any fingers at any teachers or administrators, it's probably been used here for 20 years, but it should match what we do.
But so, why don't the teachers there, though, have access like the other teachers? Why do the teachers at Bartle's not have access as the other teachers in the other schools do? Is that, is there reason for that?
They made, I frankly, I think it's just because they haven't set it up yet, and they haven't trained the teachers in how to go in there and input that information.
My issue is that if we're trying to help kids to overcome behavioral challenges, or if they, even if it's not a challenge, but they misbehave in, in one day, and that rises to the level of that, that child being reported in whatever way, don't we want the parents to know about it so that the parents can reinforce whatever it is that we're trying to work with the kids on, to talk with them, sit them down when they get home? I mean, to me, if there's something that we're writing down to keep track of something that's important enough for us to do that, it's important enough for the parent or the guardian to be made aware of it so that when they sit down at dinner or beforehand or whatever, that they can talk about it and hopefully get that turned around. Because I think a lot of, you know, a lot, a lot of our issues, I think, can be improved by additional communication to the home. And because I think parents, at least most of them, will try to, try to be helpful if they're aware. Just my thought.
Right, and they don't want it to snowball. So can we be sure that that's what happens? I'm still just trying to understand the, the difference between what happens at Bartle, I think as we all are, but-
Yeah. And at Irving, I don't have a clear understanding of that.
And can there be a consistency? Can the teachers at Bartle then be included in this access to Genesis?
They can be.
So that at least there's continuity with-
I think what I would like to do is sit down with Mr. Benjamin and make sure that there isn't another compelling reason why he's, has to use the system. He did inherit it, maybe there's a rationale for why they started it from the get. They used Power School at one point, so it's not as if we're now moving to a digital system for the first time, which has changed from Power School to Genesis. And if there's not a strong rationale for it, I don't see why we can't train the teachers in how to go into Genesis directly and input the information.
I think it makes sense, especially because, again, we're trying to, again, look at our whole code and approach to managing our students' behaviors and helping them manage their behaviors, and yet we're not exactly managing the system in a way that's, to me, is synonymous across-
I guess I'm taking it too lightly. I see the yellow sheets just as a managerial process.
But I think the issue becomes when they're presented to parents as a, like, see, I get hundreds of these a week, as a, like, this example of what am I supposed to do? Like, and then that gives the impression to parents, like, holy mackerel, where am I sending my kids? I mean, if there's hundreds of these yellow slips being generated on a weekly basis-
And some of them seem, some of them seem to be for such minor kind of force play type of issues.
So, right, so now, I mean, actually, Scott, could you go back to the slide with the, the example that you gave, the Max and Ricky? Because I think this kind of gets to the heart of what we're talking about. You gave this example out of here, and I, I found the example in here. And in this scenario that they give, they play out two possible conclusions to this. One is that the kid was just swinging it around, didn't mean to hit Ricky, hit Ricky accidentally, and was like, oh gee whiz, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to hurt him. Then it's no reporting. The scenario that you put up here is, I don't like him, he was mean to me, so I smacked him with a stick, and he's bleeding, and he had to go to the nurse. That gets reported to assault, as assault. But what I'm hearing parents come to us continually saying is, Ricky was just swinging the stick around on the playground, didn't mean to hurt anybody, and it's getting reported as assault. So I feel like an example-
Of course, for a code of conduct, that wouldn't warrant SSDS reporting. If you look at the code, for instance, if there's, let me get ahold of it, give you an example of the high school.
Well, I did the high school one, so it's a little change. But I think it gets to that, that issue of interpretation, right, of what are we mandated to report? And this is telling us, if a kid does something accidentally, doesn't mean to hurt someone, we don't have to report that as assault. You know, we picked the incident here that does lead to the assault, but there is also an alternative scenario here that says, gee whiz, Ricky didn't mean to do anything to Max.
Right, that's the question of intent. And in this case, that the intent was that-
So that's on page 15, if anybody's interested in looking at it.
And that's a totally different thing. I, I agree.
Right, because the assumption would be that that case wouldn't reach the SSDS, it wouldn't rise to that occasion, right? Because we would have caught that in our, our system of, okay, that doesn't need to be part of the state reporting.
Right.
But is that, we're looking for actually that-
And it seems like what parents are reporting to us, and of course, as board members, it's hard for us to know because we're not in the buildings, we're not seeing what's going on, but what's being reported to us is a hyper vigilance, that any time there's any physical contact, this is being reported as assault. It's being over-reported, it's being over-documented, it's being over-reacted to. I think that's what is your responsibility to suss out, like, how much of this is over-reporting? Maybe you need to go sit and spend a couple hours with the yellow book. I don't know. There's got to be a way to get to the heart of what this is, but to me, the little Max and Ricky scenario is the heart of it, because it could go one of two ways.
I don't, I'm not saying this is the magic bullet, but it, it's a help in a right, a step in the right direction. For instance, if you look at the high school vandalism category, we actually broke out different types of vandalism. In the past, misuse of school property without damage may very well have been a report to SSDS, because no matter what, it's vandalism. But here, we've actually broken up the type of vandalism to ask to report to SSDS, the type that doesn't. I'm looking for the assault categories, I can't find them right away, but I'm thinking that we did clarify.
Scott, with, in Bartle, where it says shove, push, kick, strike, it says there are Xs in the first three columns. Okay, so level-three consequences when intent is determined and confirmed. Right. So I, I mean, I, I think-
As an example?
Well, I think intent, intent is the entire thing. So if we're not doing our job to determine intent in the first, I think, I think that's the very first step, is determining intent, and that's the, that's our job. Our, meaning, you know, our employees' job. They have to figure it out, they have to determine, was the intent to injure the other kid? Was the intent because there's some sort of issue between the two of them, or was it playful in nature?
And that was what we discussed.
They have to figure it out.
Right, and that was what was being reported to us by Justin and Catherine. Like, their kid hit another kid playfully, wasn't enough that either of the kids reported it to parents, nobody reported, no adults reported it to parents either, but then it's recorded as an assault.
Yeah, and to me, that should show up nowhere, not on any kind of piece of paper. Honestly, I don't, I don't see how that, and, and I can understand why. It doesn't matter who the child is, if the parent were to find out about that as a playful incident, but somehow their child was reported as to, you know, been guilty of misconduct when it was a playful incident?
I have no problem with what you just said, and I can't say that we actually report those things in Genesis. I'd have to walk and, and, and take a deeper dive. But I have no disagreement with that.
Scott, I think the point the board is trying to make is, it's not, I think, about Genesis that many of us are concerned, it's a point about this parallel system.
Understood.
And that, that's really, I, I believe what many of us are, all of us perhaps, are asking you to, to investigate.
Okay.
So that we don't have a parallel system, and any real incident gets put as it should into Genesis, so a parent can review it, and that we have the proper record.
One of the things that was, we were talking, in the first day that we sat down in that group, it wa, it was important to that group that our policy, our new policy, was consistent, but fair.
I'm going to follow up with the board in alt-business in the September, at the September 17th meeting, so I can share with the community what my findings are, whatever resolution we have to the parallel reporting. This is a living document. I'm going to be meeting with the discipline study group throughout the year, so it's not as if this is it, we're done, although I don't anticipate changes being made throughout the school year. I think we should wait until the end of the school year to make any updates in the name of fairness.
Scott, could I?
I'm sorry, the yellow slips again. So what happens to the yellow slips at the end of the school year? Do they just get shredded or?
That's a good question. I didn't ask that.
I don't know.
Perhaps it's in a binder, placed on a shelf, no different than we put archived the Genesis information in a drop-down menu from last year. I'll, I'll find that out for you as well.
I, I had a different kind of question. On one of your sheets here with a long list of disciplinary actions, it lists teacher detention. I, I have no idea what teacher detention means.
Teacher distinction?
Detention.
Oh, detention. What a teacher might keep a student after school for a half hour.
I see, okay, thank you.
Or during lunch, yeah, at the upgrades, the upgrades, middle of high school.
Thank you.
All right. We all done?
I'm going to shut this down so you're not blind.
Is there a quick follow-up question?
All right.
Scott, going back to the district code of conduct, I, I know the high school published theirs with the, the handbook, but I didn't see it posted for the Bartle school, Irving school, or middle school. But, so each one of these codes of conducts is going to be published on the-
In the handbook. But I'm also going to put it on the website because it's, it's parents asking me about.
But one, one of the things I was looking at is like where at the high schools, like certain things, like sexual, sexual in nature, where you have like sexual harassment would be reported to law enforcement, but then it wouldn't be reported if it happened at the middle school. But it would be reported if it happened at Bartle. You know, so there seems to be some inconsistency in the response as to like-
I'll double-check that.
On some of the level-four offenses.
Well, and I can answer to that particular one, but one of the things that, that the group did try to do was to frame the responses based on the age of the kids and the, and the, the school level. Otherwise, there would simply be one.
But Rob, my only concern about what, what, is that what was left, is that we had our attorney review this document, and it could be a typo on my part that I just, I left out an X. So I'm going to have to verify that before I publish.
Yeah, there's just a few spotters.
Leave it to Rob to pick out the places where there's, so you can do those kind of things with Scott outside, okay?
But thanks for pointing that out, Rob.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up.
You're like a little robot that like picks out things, that are like beep, 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 that one's not right, beep, 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 that one's not right.
Yes, Rob, you're a little robot.
All right, so with Scott's report concluded, if you guys are okay, since we have folks who I'm assuming are here to provide public comment, instead of making them sit through all of our committee reports, which you may want to stay and do, but if you don't, I will give you that out. If it's okay with everyone, I'll move public comment up to 11, switch 11 and 12.
Sure.
Yep, okay. So Linda, can we go ahead and do that? So we will make item number 11, public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education will give some public participation and reserve this time for your comments. So you can come up to the podium, just state your name and address for the record, and please write it down on the piece of paper that should be there, so the committee secretary can record it in her notes as well. Not a yellow slip, it will not be recorded.
I'm Jennifer Evans, and I'm 138 and 166. Actually, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but actually, a couple things sitting through this meeting came up, and so I, I just want to bring up the, the two things that I, okay. I was really excited to see about the GNT program, I know this has been something that works, and I just wanted to get some clarification. I know that you had asked, and I had the same question, how does that translate to the middle school and then to the high school? And I know you had mentioned something about, well, it doesn't, the GNT program doesn't, but you're going to offer other classes. So let's look through your, what is it, the Pathway to Excellence? In G2A4, you've actually mentioned that in the middle school, you're looking to D-track. So I'm wondering, how are you translating that to, how are you going to accommodate children on different levels if you're D-tracking the sciences, I guess?
That's a good question. We'll actually be narrowing the levels. We're not going to D-track completely. So for instance, right now, in sixth grade, we have three levels. We're looking to go down to two levels. So for those kids who are gifted in math, they'll still have that accelerated pathway. So for a sixth grader, a sixth grader, it will, it could mean pre-algebra, or it could just be in grade, the upper, that would be pre-algebra, and then seventh grade, be algebra, and then eighth grade would be geometry. Seventh, that eighth grade currently have four different levels. We would look to reduce it to three.
So just a, just a general comment, I actually do have an education degree and certified teacher and everything. When you start creating a larger, our, our classes are getting larger, and it creates a real hardship on the, on the teachers when you start narrow, or creating a pool of students that has such a wide variety of ranges. So to ask them to differentiate now these wide ranges is, it, it really is a hardship on the teachers, and I just wonder how they're going to be able to-
That's a great question. So there are actually a couple of ways we're thinking of doing that. By the way, we're going to be starting a advisory group, so if there's something you're interested in, we spoke earlier, you should email me, and I can tuck your name away and put you on that list. We would, first of all, over the summer of 2019, bring our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math teachers together so they can vertically articulate the curriculum, so we make sure that we don't have the issue of kids entering sixth grade with all of these different skill levels, because we did our work down in fourth grade and fifth grade. That's number one. Number two, we're talking about adding a support class for the sixth graders who might not have made the, you know, the middle track in sixth grade cut, but just need that little bit of extra help. They would be placed in a cycle class that would provide them extra math support. Those are just two ways we're talking about, trying to reduce the load. And of course, we're going to be working with our teachers to more effectively differentiate instruction. We might, we might look at our personnel and find the individuals, since we're such a small program, we only have one or two teachers teaching math in each grade level, we might want to, we look at our personnel and consider somebody who is a perfect match for that kind of model, if the person doing it right now doesn't feel comfortable with it.
And we are also looking at continually keeping class sizes lower. We're certainly not looking to allow class sizes to spiral out of control.
Yeah, I don't want you to think that because we're merging.
Well, I see all these buildings and construction going on, like the school.
Yeah, no, 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 and actually, I mean, Mr. Krieger over here, who's the chair of our finance and facilities committee, has been doing a heroic job of tracking enrollment, and we now look at enrollment on a monthly basis, and we're actually, our enrollment's actually lower, believe it or not, even with all the development, so it does seem like we're gonna hit some like, and which is why we're doing this, because we have the same fear, you see all this additional construction going on, it must be translating into additional seats in the schools, and it's really not, we're actually, we're holding very steady, so.
It was on a decrease, so without the additional building, it would have continued to go down, so for a variety of reasons, but it's been very, very steady for about two and a half or three years now.
Yeah, so as long as we keep class sizes at a reasonable level, I think our, our teachers should be able to handle the, the level of differentiation, and so far, they are, I mean, right now, we're not tracking in math at all, until we get into sixth grade, and Bartle teachers, actually, I mean, they're loving the professional development that they're getting in math right now, and I don't think we've heard many, yeah, I mean, they're, they're over the moon about the, the professional development that they're getting in math, and we haven't heard any concerns about the lack of tracking in Bartle, even though it has been there historically, and so we're looking to just move that model up to the sixth grade, but as Scott said, to keep that upper track for, there are always gonna be kids in math who just wanna, you know, do calculus when they're four, I don't know, I wasn't that kid, my kids aren't those kids, but there are those kids.
I'm a kid either, but I know that there are kids out there, you know, obviously, when you're going to college, you're, you know, the schools are looking at your transcripts, and I want to make sure, or you know, it would be nice if we can follow along and have advanced math classes throughout, so kids who are able to do it and want to do it can do it.
Sure, and just saying detracking can sound like this very scary thing, but what the goal's board, the, the board's goal is, is not to take away opportunities for kids, but to make sure that the kids who are, have been historically stuck in the lower tracks, which, once you get up to the high school level, you can walk down our hallways, and you will see white and Asian kids in this class, and black and brown kids in that class, we're trying to stop that from happening, and we're trying to make sure that all kids have the same opportunities.
And that's the point, I just don't want to make, I want to make sure that we are keeping all ends.
Absolutely.
And not forgetting about, you know, the achievers, because they are easily forgotten, and they become problems.
I think what's, what's really amazing is that Highland Park has a reputation of being a high-performing school district, we've just accorded the U.S. News and World Report accolade of Gold Status, yet, we've been resting on the laurels of our high achievers, we have not really done enough for those kids who are in these lower tracks, not being exposed to the same rigorous curriculum as it appears, imagine the status of our district, if you just want to look at it from that vain perspective, if all those kids were also high achieving.
All right, so the next thing that I wanted to bring up was, I had a question about the code of conduct, the new code of conduct, I need clarity, when a, so I was looking through this briefly, level two, level three, level four, at what level does the parent, and not the aggressor, but the parent of the victim get notified?
If a restorative circle is in order, absolutely, if it's a situation in which the victim has been harmed emotionally or physically, absolutely, and if that's not happening, I need to know about it, can you give me a scenario?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to go into the details, but I, we had an incident this year, and I was not notified until at least the fifth or sixth incident, actually, I wasn't notified, I was not notified by the school at all, and this is after multiple nurse visits, so I had a very big concern, and there was no notification to me that my child had gone to the nurse several times, so, so my next question is, what I found out through going through this process, is that the code of conduct this past year was a mess, there was no consistency, and nobody knew what to do, I got a different answer from different people, and there was no communication within the school as well, if I talked to one person, they didn't know that this had happened, and another person didn't know, knew some of this, it was just, I felt, it was confused, and what I got from that is, the code of conduct is actually in flux, so there was really no code of conduct, so I'm glad to see that there's a code of conduct now, so, I guess my, my next question is, I'm all for this restorative practice, I really do believe in it, I want to know what happens in this restorative practice, or this experience that we go through, if, in order for it to be successful, all parties need to collaborate, correct? What happens when a party decides not to collaborate?
Yeah, we've, actually, as a board, we've discussed that, and what we, our, the people we work with, who trade us, have told us that it's not a good thing to force somebody to participate in a circle.
Okay, I, I'll agree with that, but I want to know what happens, and how do you explain to your child, who has had emotional, you know, is emotionally upset, has been physically harmed, that, how do I explain that we can't go any further?
Well, what should happen is that, then that child should be, especially if it's an upper grade child, the middle high school referred to the teen center for somebody to talk to, and maybe even get to a point at which they could come back to the circle, and actually have a restorative circle, and that's happened, I mean, we've had situations in which kids have fought, they, I'm leaving parents and guardians out of the picture, the kids don't want to get together in a circle, but then they've worked with some of our adults, and they decide, okay, maybe I can repair my relationship, I'm gonna come back to it, a couple of weeks later, a month later, that's what should happen, now, if I'm a parent, unless you are, and I didn't get a follow-up call, well, that's not a good thing, first of all, I've gotta make sure that my principals are communicating with both the parents and guardians of victims, as well as offenders, but I'm picking up the phone, and I'm calling the main office, and I'm saying, hey, look, I, I need some help for my child, I mean, she comes home, she's scared, she doesn't want to go back to school, what can you do for me, and at that point, there should be either referral to the guidance counselor, or, in most cases, referral to the teen center of the upper grades, at the lower grades, we've, we work more with our guidance counselors.
So, I, I mean, I will say, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but this, this is a recurring theme of this lack of communication home, so I think this does really need to be a, a topic of discussion between you and the folks in the building, like when there should be that contact home, so parents know if there's something that's going on with their kid in school, on either end of that equation.
I agree, and I just want to reiterate the fact that when this new code of conduct is, is signed off on, or whatever, that the staff gets trained on it, and they know what to do, when to do it, because, like I said, this past year has been an eye-opener for me, and it's been extremely disappointing, and not only for me, for my child, who came to me with the code of conduct that she signed off on in her handbook this year, and said, why is this not happening, I don't understand, mommy, so, I mean, these kids are old enough, at least in, in middle school and high school, to read a piece of paper that you are requiring them to sign, and they're saying the school isn't doing what they're saying they're gonna do, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. You're good.
We need to sign in as well?
Yes, please.
John Evans, 136th Avenue as well, two things, actually, let's go back to the, the demarcation of math, and my apologies, Scott, because I haven't seen everything, one question though, so let's just do some math, so we'll say in sixth grade, you're saying we have three, and then we're going down to two, okay, so, I'm throwing these numbers out there just because it makes it easy, and I'm an English guy, not a math guy, 60 kids, right, 20 in each level, now, if we get, all right, yeah, you see where I'm going with this, right, so now, if we go down to two levels, do we try to split evenly, or does like the, the bar shift for who goes into what level, or, if you have three levels, you know, like, we'll go 0 to 30% is here, 30 to 60 is here, 69 is here, right, so now, if we go to two, is it a 45 to 45?
No, we would open up additional sections, we would open up additional sections, the teachers thought to teach five, at least five classes a, a day, we're not gonna reduce staff.
Yeah, no, I would just want to, because as you're talking about that, I was like, how's that gonna work?
I, I would answer that differently, let's say there's three.
Mark, make sure you use your microphone.
I'm sorry, let, let's say there's three groups of 30, the, I'm gonna call it the most advanced group of 30, they will continue to be with each other, it's the two groups of 30 that have been in two separate classes, kind of a low and a middle, they will, they will be integrated, and then they'll be moved around so that class size is exactly what it was.
Yeah, because Scott, it goes back to what you were saying about the highest achievers, you know, you don't penalize them, of course not, so I guess, that was kind of my question is, is obviously, and this is a hard way of saying it, but somebody has to suffer a little bit by coming down, but you know, you kind of take the hit by bringing, trying to bring people up, and just kind of where, where that line was, was my.
Well, there's also this kind of very arbitrary nature to where those lines of demarcation are, right, and what we've seen with the three levels is that the kids who get placed into lower levels, based on whatever the matrix is, you know, the test scores of this, that, the other, the parents of means, say, I don't want my kids in the lower level, put them in the middle level, but the parents who don't know about that, keep their kids in that lower level, so the kids who's, or the, the kids of the parents of means go up here, and they function okay, because now they're with kids who are higher performing, and now you still have these kids who don't have a parent advocating for them, who are down here, but if they had been up there, they probably could have done the same, so we're trying to take away those structural barriers that are arbitrary, and hold all kids to the same standards, because they can all learn.
Yeah, and that really was more of a clarifying question on my part than it was any kind of criticism by any such.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, good, no, I just, I, I love our opportunities to like, you know, clarify what it is that we're trying to do, because we, we do want to keep reinforcing, yeah, well, we want to keep reinforcing that message that this isn't to take away from kids, this is to help, you know, raise all boats.
Okay, fine, so, the second point though, is going back to the code of conduct, so I feel very strongly about this, and, you know, Jennifer expressed it a little bit, but, I mean, you're all parents here, I know, most of you are, I don't know everybody, so I can't say, but, to have your child, who's in sixth grade, so she's not in high school, so every, and we'll get back to Scott, to some of the things that you suggested, which do not apply in this situation, to have your child cry at night, beg you to be homeschooled, beg, I don't want to go to school, can I be homeschooled, beg, cry on a daily basis, Scott, you've got a daughter a couple of years older than Natalie, don't you feel that bad, I mean, don't you feel that bad, on a daily basis, because she believes, and Jennifer alluded to this before with the code of conduct, she believes, not necessarily, I'm not gonna be, you as the collective, you've let her down, you've let her down, you have, you know, I'm a little old school, I get to be the crafty, grumpy old guy sometimes, she'll tell you that, but the idea of, okay, so, business environment, what's sexual harassment? Hostile environment, right, that's the definition of harassment of course, when you create a hostile environment, so obviously, you know, from a legal standpoint, you can't do that, what happens when an organization, for lack of a better term, doesn't do what it has promised its constituents, the children, that it's going to protect them and create a safe and non-hostile environment, now, Scott, to your point about, well, go to the teen center, no, come on, why are you putting the onus on my daughter to go seek help? She did, she's been the assistant principal many times, she's best friends with the guy in the team, you know, I mean, where, and they, they love her, and she's a good kid, but now you're asking her to do more, and again, to Jennifer's point about the restorative, listen, if a kid has an issue, we should do everything we can to help that kid learn how to behave in a, a microcosm of society, absolutely, not saying you, you know, put them out in the stock, and stockade, and lash, no, of course not, that's ridiculous, but at some point, don't you have to say enough's enough, don't you have to say, okay, the in-school suspension, the counseling, all this is not working, because this kid, or kids, are continuing the action with no fear of consequence, because there is none for them, was there a little shame that they're all of a sudden have to have an in-school suspension? They got over that pretty quickly, and to a certain extent, they reveled it, because it was for them a mark of achievement, look what I did, and, and I'm not, this was not a one-time incident, and believe me, I am not exaggerating this, so what happens then? At what point, you know, one of the, the recommendations from the assistant principal, who I, I give all kudos to, very professional woman, I can't remember her name right now, was kind of that, that counseling, interaction, group circle kind of thing, other party didn't want to participate, and that was what Jennifer's question was, what happens when the parents of the other children do not want to participate, what am I supposed to do then? Because now you've left me no recourse, because my child cannot get the answers that she wants from somebody of authority, whether it's a parent, whether it's administration, she's not getting that, so what do you tell her at that point? You know, and, and again, like I said, the, the pain in this child who's not doing nothing but trying to do the right thing, constantly, consistently doing the right thing, and has nothing to show for it but just another day of harassment, and another day of pain and suffering, and to, I, one of you gentlemen over here was talking about, actually, I think, Marsha, you might say something about the intent with the kindergarten, okay, and yeah, intent, when you report things, obviously, that's a big difference, when you're a five-year-old or a six-year-old in kindergarten, intent, intent, you can do whatever, when you're a 12 or 13-year-old, and you lie about what the intent was, but we all know as parents what the intent was, how do you deal with that? You know, I mean, because all of a sudden now, you know, kids are smart, we all know that, now, Darcy, your girls are state ages now, you know, if they got in trouble, they're, I'm not saying they would, but they're smart and know how to play the system, I mean, I answered what it was, I went to school here, I went to high school, I did all kinds of shit like you wouldn't believe, I never got in trouble, you know why? I knew how to play the system, because I was seen as a good student, I was seen as a nice kid, I was down in the principals' office, and the vice-principal's office all the time, but John didn't do it, John, John, we're not done that, you think kids don't know that? So, so what's the recourse, I mean, because like, how do you determine intent, and if you're basing the actions of the administration on intent, how do you gauge that for a 12-year-old?
I mean, I, I don't know any of the particulars of the, the situation, obviously, that happened, so it's, it's hard to, it's hard to respond, really, but one of the things I can tell you that we're doing is, we have created an additional position at the high school for an assistant principal, one of the downfalls, I think, of the last few years was the shared assistant principal between the middle school and the high school, and we saw that in multiple ways over the last couple of years, so there's now going to be a dedicated assistant principal in each building, so hopefully, some of these situations that could carry on, and, for lack of a better word, fester, will be able to be caught more quickly, more attention paid to them, and, you know, hopefully, this will also improve that communication home, it'll improve a, a number of the, the issues that we've seen, both in the middle school and in the high school, because there'll be that dedicated staff, in the high school, there's even then a, a third person, that's the students, darn it, I never get the name right, youth safety specialist, you know, so we're gonna have lots of, you know, so-called boots on the ground, to help with these kind of situations, to stop them, you know, hopefully in their tracks, I'm so sorry to hear that, you know, a situation was that pronounced and that distressing, that is really upsetting, and it is very frustrating if there's no, you know, it feels on your end, like there's no acknowledgement of that pain and suffering on the other end, I wish I had something else to offer, as some concrete, you know, way that that could have been handled differently, because I just don't know, I don't know the particulars, but, you know, that, that's certainly not how we want children to go home at the end of the day, you know, and there are systems in place that should catch situations like that, but, you know, I guess they clearly don't, you know, they don't always work as intended in all situations, but I'm very sorry that you guys went through that last year.
Well, hopefully, this new code of conduct, and I know that, again, because it was in flux last year, that there were some questions, you know, even from the assistant principals, like, well, I know this, I know this, and I kind of felt bad for them, because they're trying to do the right thing, but they're not really sure what the right thing was, because, because there was that, that flux, and, but, you know, again, I, I think, code of conduct, from what I've seen, again, I just looked at it, it was coming in a couple minutes ago, so, you know, Scott, maybe we can talk about this offline at some point, but, there has to be a line someplace where you say enough, and if that means I've got to do, again, talking about names, and it's H.I.B., is that the?
Yeah, yeah.
So, because that was one of the things, that came up, because, you know, I looked through that, and I looked through it with a fine-tooth comb, and everything that happened could have fallen under that, you know, and, but at the same time, I, you know, listen, kids are kids, kids are jerks, I was a mom, I know, they know, Natalie knows, everybody knows, but, but they're, so, so you don't want to just go screaming, you know, crying wolf, when there was something like, oh, really, and, you know, that's, that's not, that's not bullying, back in my day, the bullying was, that's not him, but at the same time, there is a line where, it's like, no, something's gotta happen, because now I'm failing her as a father, I don't tell my kids I have two, two jobs in life, the first is to keep them safe, and the second is definitely to be good people, and when she comes home crying like that, I'm not doing my number one job, I'm not, and for me, and Jennifer will tell you, for me to come home from work on a, on a workday, to come meet with the assistant principal, to talk about a disciplinarian issue, and it's not like, so, the point is, it's gotten bad, and here's the thing, so, based on this code of conduct that we now have that's going to be enacted, what is, what, I don't want to say with assurances, but I don't, what assurances do I have that this isn't going to start in two weeks again, the same cycle, because it's the same kids? it's the same kids? Now, you're going to tell me in the last three months, those kids have somehow reformed themselves? I don't want to be cynical in front of a guy, but...
Did anyone talk to you guys about stay-away agreements? I mean, that's something that's put in place as well.
That was, that was done with the children in, in question and one of Natalie's other clients. I don't know how much that has continued, but I know that was one of the things that was part of it, so, yeah, I actually took my own advice.
Yeah. I mean, and the H.I.B., I mean, it's, if it, if it, you know, seems to, you know, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, you know.
I'd like to also add, I just published on the website a flowchart, when you have a concern that's not addressed at a certain level, what, who you should contact, and I'm right there. So, if it gets to a point at which, next year, let's hope it doesn't, that you're frustrated and you feel like there's been an action, and you've worked with the principal, it's time for you to call me and let me help you, if I can. So, keep that in mind.
Yeah, and we, and we did go through all, all the channels. Again, everybody in the administration was very helpful. I, I mean, you know, they definitely took time out to meet with us and discuss everything. So, I mean, I, all nothing but praise for, for that part of the administration. Yeah, part of it was also, we got to the end of the school year, and it was kind of like, well, we, you know, because we, because we knew that there was going to be a new code of conduct, so it was like, you know, we kind of got caught in between. Jennifer actually did draft a letter, which I did follow up on, it's my fault. But, but, yeah, and again, I, I think, it's just me being silly, and it's just, I, I get it, but I, you know, the code of conduct, there are papers, I see it, but I also saw it, my daughter showed me she signed on the first day of school action.
Well, it's really like anything, right? I mean, you can't, as much as we would like to pretend that we can control human behavior and human interactions, you know, all, all the good intentions in the world and all the support systems in the world, and guidance counselors and teen centers, and we're not going to be able to, you know, modify everyone's behavior in a positive way as much as we, so we may try, you know, there are other factors and influences at work that, you know, we can't always control for. So, you know, I mean, all, all of us can do is try to put as many safety rails in, in place as possible and, you know, do the best we can, but I keep coming back to the parental notification thing, you know, I mean, if we're not working together with the parents to, you know, mitigate these kind of search, these situations.
Yeah, and Darcy, you mentioned before, also, and Jennifer alluded to this before, actually, when she makes, it was said, we talked to one individual who, again, I, I was amazed and appalled that this individual didn't know anything that was going on. Because this person, again, I'm being gender neutral because you know who I'm talking about, that the one person knew everything, the other person knew nothing. And they are both in positions where, again, as an outsider, but a fairly intelligent outsider, I think they should have both been in concert, and they weren't. And it was just amazing that this one person, who knew Natalie very well, who knows Natalie very well, knew nothing about this, and was shocked when Jennifer mentioned it. The person said, "Really? I never..." You know, of course, it's Natalie's fault for not expressing that as well, but I'm just really surprised that, again, it's one incident, no problem, that happens all the time, right? But being that there was a series and a pattern that those two individuals at a fairly high level in the administration did not know, I was very surprised about that. So, that's obviously just a thing that, you know, somebody guys got to figure out, but just to reiterate, and then jump on the bandwagon with that person. All right, that's why I thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, guys. Okay, so, we will go back to our board committee reports. Curriculum and instruction, Michelle's not here, but I think Rob, she passed the baton to you, am I correct?
Yeah, she did.
All right.
So, going straight to the agenda, number one, approval of field trips, the number one, the field trip there is for the teen pep training, which is the peer-to-peer sex education training in North Brunswick. The HIB incidence reports are from June, approval of curriculum. We have updated curriculum for grades six through 12. If you were looking on the, on the drive and you didn't see anything for grade 10, that's because that's driver's ed. So, that's, that entire segment there is taken up by driver's ed, so there wasn't a curriculum written for that portion. Four and five, Schedule B, interclassical schedules, university graduate students, and then one slight change, graduate student, where we moved the teacher, so the graduate student moved along with the teacher. In terms of our meeting, we did have a meeting last week, we mixed it up a little bit, it was Michelle and I, along with Mark Krieger and Ruth, so there's four of us there. The, we talked about the health curriculum and trying to balance the health curriculum between sex education and also the drug counseling that we have, the drug, because what we're looking at is whether or not we are required to have...
Dare.
Well, dare's gone, it's replaced, I want to say lead.
Lead, all right.
And whether or not lead and combination with what we're already doing in our health classes is really just hitting the same subject area twice.
Right. And perhaps not from a perspective that is...
Yeah, I, I've not heard very good things about lead so far, and I think a lot of people aren't bored with the idea that if we don't have to have it, we can eliminate it and just focus on our own health classes, and then we'll save some time there so that we're not double-dipping into something that we don't need to. But, Scott, you were...
We also talked about choosing more play-based learning at Irving.
Oh, yeah, I was going to get into that, sorry.
I shared with the...
It was great to have Mark there to talk about the play-based learning and whether or not we have everything there at the schools to have that play-based learning, because we're looking at whether or not we have all the materials there for the kids to actually really play in the classroom, whether or not they have things to play with, which was Mark's concern. So, I think you were going to look at the, an inventory of the classrooms, just to see what's there and what we can...
Mark has been an advocate for us trying to, to build more playsets into our programs. I also added that to the committee, we are building into every pre-K, K1 schedule, at least 15 to 20 minutes of playtime daily. We're taking that from the literacy block, and we're going to quadruple the number of day of plays that we had, I have to get and thank Ruth for that. So, we're going to do it four times a year. And we're going to be requiring our Irving staff to participate in professional development that helps encourage them, helps them better understand how to refuse play in their, in their program. We'll probably use some of the contractual hours that they are obligated to work with us for professional development. Well, one of the last things I'll add, we'll have likely the teachers who are on the committee I established to look at this, Christine Gap, actually, start with pre-K, Anna Vargas, Christine Gap, Susan Curtin, and Mary Alsaker, conduct those workshops.
And I think the only thing that, we also talked extensively about the middle school de-tracking, which we basically covered in public comment this evening, except for one aspect, I think we, we also talked about having a parent and student advisory group, and that would be formed, just to kind of flush it out more and assage some of the concerns that people have.
Well, and I think, you know, as we move through this this year, we need to look at that idea that we've talked about a few times about doing this panel discussion, like, we've got national experts, you know, ready to come in and...
We have one who's actually a specialist in math.
Yeah, I mean, we're like...
At Rutgers.
Yeah, I've, I've sit through this meeting, I've sat through a curriculum committee meeting, I'm still not convinced, so, I'm, I'm looking forward to having a panel.
Can we go back to the lead thing? Did that lead anywhere?
Lead? We want to...
Did you know this has been a little pet peeve of mine as well?
Nice transition. The administration discussed it, and they believe we should move it away and have it, have our focus on substance abuse be in our curriculum, but we haven't talked to the teachers yet, want to get some of their input when they come back in the fall. So, we'll have time, lead isn't usually introduced until the spring, and we are, regardless of lead, forging ahead with our new program, which includes a whole unit on substance abuse.
Teachers in general, or just the health teachers?
No, just the two, middle school health, E.E. teachers.
Okay, but administratively, you guys are on board for, cool. All right, anybody have any questions for Rob or Scott on any of the curriculum items? No? All right, thank you, Rob. Mark, finance and facilities?
Yes, indeed, thank you. So, I want to go through the, the agenda. Items one through 14 are our usual bill lists and financial reports. Item, item 15 is membership in C.J. Pride Minority Recruitment Consortium, and the point of that is to provide an avenue to recruit more minority candidates. Item 16 is something that Linda and I talked about at the last finance committee meeting with the, our insurance broker, which was to change our annual insurance premium to reflect an increase in our deductible, to save, to save $5,636. He recommended it because we haven't had claims in a few years, so, we were literally paying more, we were paying more and, and not getting any benefit for it.
Is that one worded wrong? I move the Board of Education, accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the reduction in the property insurance deductible from 1,000 to 5,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It should be the increase in the property insurance deductible from 1,000 to 5,000.
Let me read that in then, as such, I'll read the whole thing in. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve the increase in the deductible, property insurance deductible, from 1,000 to 5,000 per claim, thereby generating an annual premium savings...
It's a reduction in our...
Right. Of 500 and, $5,636 for 2018-19 school year. We could have increased it even, even more, but that would...
That's exactly when something will happen.
That's when something will happen.
That's when fate goes...
So, Linda appropriately took the middle ground.
And if it's another two years, then we can...
So, item 17, we're accepting a donation, thank you, from the class of 2018, for $3,000 to be used for the high, high school auditorium restoration project.
Fabulous.
Item 18 is our attempt to bid out our athletic transportation, which we discussed for, very briefly at our finance meeting before the regular session. We had no bids, and apparently, this is widespread, the inability to get bids, which means we may, we may end up going back to using coaches at greater expense during the year to move our teams around. I think Linda is going to go, no, this was the second attempt, so, we, we will probably have to go to the coaches.
Linda, what is the issue? Why is it that no one's bidding on these anymore? I don't, I know we've discussed this, but I don't.
Well, the, the initial problem was about bus companies that couldn't do athletic runs because it conflicted with the regular student pickup and drop-off of school, because school times.
Right.
Then, so they would have extra buses with extra drivers to handle athletic runs, but they can't, they can't get the drivers because the Department of Transportation, or Department of Education, Transportation Department, has made it much more stringent.
So, I feel like we need to, like, get together with some other districts and do some advocacy around this. Like, this is costing us some serious money.
This is an issue we've been discussing at Trenton, I'm on the legislative committee for NJASA, and it is systemic, it's already on everybody's radar, something that I think my association is going to try to work on, just, so, not only are they...
I'll ask NJSBA too, and see if they've done anything, like, maybe there's a resolution we could adopt and bring, do, like, do that for a delegate assembly resolution or something, like, we've got to do something, this is kind of wacky.
There's another issue here, though, that I was alerted to by the commission, which we use to help us with the bid process, and that is, there are more and more drivers, I'm being told, who just don't want to do it because they don't want to deal with the hassle of working with students, with kids who are misbehaving or whatnot, they can be making more money doing other things. So, it's not, besides the rigorous standards, the increased, limited measurement, there's now much increased costs in getting the certification, I don't think it's worth it, I don't think it's worth the buck for the buck.
Increased cost to the drivers themselves to get themselves certified.
Correct. In fact, one school district nearby, which remained able, is very large, in Middlesex County, has its own fleet, has to hire coach buses because they can't get enough drivers to drive their own buses.
It's insane.
Oh, my God.
That was the case last year. That's how bad it is.
So, item 19 is a acceptance of, acceptance of a grant application for $12,600. Unfortunately, last year, we received $34,000, so this is a net reduction of over $22,000 in Title I, Title I assistance. I think it's Title I. Yes, it's Title I. Item 20 is approval of contractors. Delta T does evaluations, this is evaluations for case management, nurses, aides, et cetera. And then, NWA, NWA is workshop, learning workshops, and St. Peter's, St. Peter's is our school doctor. 22 is the amendment to an existing settlement agreement.
21.
Uh, 21, excuse me. I'm sorry, so this is an out-of-district special education placement, number 20, three of them, item 21. And 22 is an amendment to an existing settlement where the child is moving to a different school. Item 23 is an addition to the HPEA contract to add a junior paraprofessional position to the recognized position and establish an hourly rate of 860. This is for a student in, in our system who would like to be a paraprofessional, and this is a way to help to bring this student on and train her and move her forward. And, and we negotiated this with the association, and it's, it's a very well thought out and very positive thing for this student. Okay. Number 24 is the addition of a one-to-one aid for a student attending an out-of-district school. 25 to 30 are contracts to coordinate transportation with different other districts or the Educational Services Commission, et cetera. And, that's it.
Okay.
Oh, and, and before I go on, well, first of this questions, and then I just give a very brief report on our committee meeting.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah. I couldn't quite figure out how being a member of C.J. Pride would benefit our district.
I'm sorry, I'll clarify. So, C.J. Pride is a consortium of Middlesex and Mercer County school districts, about 15 of them, that get together, pull their resources, and they produce recruitment fairs for minority candidates twice a year in the spring. So, now that we're a member district, we can represent ourselves at this recruitment fair. We're trying to make a better effort to pull in minority candidates.
Absolutely. And the recruitment fairs that they've had in the past have been, like, large events, where there's a lot of people...
Say that again?
So, the recruitment fairs that they've sponsored in the past, there's been a lot of people come.
Oh, yes, this is an organization that's been around for years. I don't know how many, but it's long existing. Came to my attention from Monique, or last year, it was a little too late for us to get in on the last spring. The, the initial startup fee is a one-time fee, and then I think it's $100 annual after that?
Yes, that's right.
So, it's a very minimal fee.
And a lot of the big school districts in the area, they're all participants.
I think up in Middlesex County, North Brunswick, is one of the only Middlesex County districts representing itself, but everybody else is like West Windsor, West Windsor's the host.
Okay, so, thank you.
So, as far as the finance committee, Linda gave us our usual report. We've started creating a list of the unforeseen revenues and expenses for the new school year, so that's just beginning, and there's nothing really to disclose. We're a few dollars ahead, but we've got lots of unforeseen expenses already, but we did get a, some more money from the state over this, I think $94,000 or $97,000 more, as we often do. And then Linda had, has given us a report of projection of available funds, which we can move, but not into, if we're, if we're ahead with leftover funds from 2017-18, well, if we're behind, then we're, that money will be kind of lost to us in 2018-19, we'll be a little bit more behind. But if we're ahead, the money will go into 2019. So, we, at the moment, I think we were $4,000 ahead, and the auditor is coming in, and with the audit report, we should know exactly where we are. with the audit report, we should know exactly where we are. But, it's very, very close, and kudos to Linda. You know, we estimated, I think, a million moving forward. Very, very close to that. So, great job. Thank you. Any other questions?
Anything else, Mark? No? Okay. So, we will move on to personnel. Judy?
Yes. Okay. We did have our meeting with Ruth and I and Scott, and we've had a number of resignations, but happily, where on the agenda tonight is some new hires. I think we're down to just needing a para at Irving, the middle school, and three lunch aides. I think we're still looking to fill, but besides that, we're looking good. So, I'm going to go through the agenda items. Number one is the Source for Teachers sub-list. And then, tonight, number two, we have the approval of Dr. Taylor's replacement contract for 2018 to 2022 employment. We have the resignation of a Bartle Elementary School teacher, Mary Prunio. And then, four and five are resignations of paras, both at Irving. We have the approval of administrative leave for employee 4659, effective September 4th. We will be striking items seven and eight tonight. Number nine is stipend for Jody Parsons, who's our technology technician. She has additional duties that she's responsible for relating to NJ Smart reporting, so you'll see that listed in number nine. Number 10 is the transfer of a special ed teacher to Irving, and then some transfer of paras, and that's all relating to, you know, where they're needed for class size. There's a correction in number 12, but it is the hiring of the maternity replacement assistant principal, Amanda Rosenberg, at the middle school. It should read, though, effective September 1st, 2018 through March 29th, 2019. Number 13 is the appointment of a maternity replacement elementary teacher at Bartle, Alyssa Roybal. And then, let's see, we have a maternity replacement para, Laura Zaki. The appointment of the principal at Irving Primary School, Megan McNally. The new gifted and talented teacher we talked about tonight. As Scott mentioned, she does have a background also in special ed and STEM as well, so we're very excited to have her on board. We have a new guidance counselor, Nashwa Badawi, and she was an intern here, and she came with, you know, high recommendations from Ms. Kirk, right? So, another person we're excited to have on board. 18 is appointment of a Bartle Elementary School teacher, Allison Rocker. Then, we have another Bartle Elementary teacher, Catherine Bender, maternity replacement elementary teacher at Bartle, Julianne Erde. We have a guidance counselor at the middle school, high school. Special ed teacher at the middle school, Christina Zom. And then, 23 and 24, I'll explain a little bit. It's a part-time English teacher in middle school and a part-time math teacher. You all might remember that the math teacher who was on maternity leave took the part-time Irving School Media Specialist job. So, the principal over at the element, excuse me, at the middle school decided she wanted to split the position. I have a part-time math teacher and a part-time English teacher to help with class sizes. So, that's why we have two, we hired two part-time teachers rather than one full-time math teacher. Then, number 25 is another para at the middle school, Real Knight. Another para at the middle school, a para at Bartle. We did hire one lunch aide, number 28. We worked on a new job description, not a new position, but a new revising of a job description for the staff and student support teacher over at Bartle. Ruth and I gave some recommendations, so Scott's going to revamp that. Then, the junior para that what Mark mentioned, I think in his finance report, number 30. And then, we have instructional assignments, number 31. Ever getting to the end of my personnel agenda? We had summer days for super... Oh, okay. We have, on number 32, we needed to assign more summer hours for DeeDee Deacher due to the workload over with the educational services. Then, we have number 33, some breakfast paras at the middle school. Then, we have some staff for the Windows of Understanding meeting. We have number 35, consultation of compensation for staff to attend a district evaluation advisory committee meeting. Some math training approval, number 36. It goes on. And then, we have 37, some Schedule B appointments. Approval of a football, volunteer football coach, 38. Some staff curriculum writing hours assigned to teachers under number 39. Teacher coordinator for the Title I Summer Holistic Program, number 40. PD in-service days for two teachers. Read 180 Professional Development, number 42. And then, approval payment for staff for preparation of the Play-Based Learning Workshops, number 43. Then, we have some change of hours for summer 2018 child steam testing for IEP meetings. So, some of them have gone up and some of them have gone down. And we have a change of hours for the extended school year. Those paras are listed. We have teachers that are giving hours for kindergarten orientation, and that is the end of my presentation.
Judy, my goodness. Does anybody have any questions for Judy on anything on the personnel agenda?
Number 12, the dates for the appointment?
Yes.
Is that through March 29th of 2019?
Yes, 2019, yes.
I weren't paying attention when I read in the question.
No, I was still somewhere...
Yes.
And I also just wanted to mention, you know, normally when we are hiring a principal in the building, we make a big hoopla, and the principal comes out, and, you know. And the only reason we're not doing that in this case is because Megan has been the interim principal at the middle school. Megan took over at Irving when Kelly originally went out on maternity leave.
And was a wonderful special ed teacher for many, many, many years.
Right, exactly.
It was anticlimactic. I thank you for saying something.
Yeah. You know, I didn't, we're not certainly not giving Megan a short shrift, but she's been here and she's done that tap dance, I think, a couple of times. Exactly. She's done that tap dance a couple of times, so...
So, no worries.
But, it is not any indication of a lack of excitement that Megan is taking over at Irving, so...
She and I sent out letters to the community pointing out that we are going to recommend her, and blah, blah, blah. We've gotten good feedback, so I think people are very receptive to her being...
Absolutely.
Yes, and Ruth and Ann and I did sit down with her and had a conversation about what her plans were as the official principal instead of a fill-in, so we're really excited about some of her ideas. It's going to be a good match.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything on any personnel items? Nope. All right. No, Ann here for policy. Anybody who was in any policy meetings? Did anybody get tagged or tapped?
She wanted, she asked me to do it, and I said, Michelle, why don't you take a turn? But, since Michelle's not here, I'd be happy...
That's why Michelle's not here.
I would, yes, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to move these when we're ready to move them.
Okay.
We did go through the first reading, three new policies. They're on the board drive. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying update. Immigrant justice, which came from a local immigrant justice group and was somewhat rewritten. I took a hack at it, and then others of us went over it. And then, equity in educational programs and services was reviewed. And then, we have the two policies for second reading, which is the grading system and the cultural competency policies. And if there are questions, I'll do my best, and, you know, Scott was there, and others of us were there, so, you know, we could do our best to go over them.
I'll point out there were no new changes made to the second read policies.
Right, right.
Ann, point of interest, we referred to Strauss Esme for some assistance on the immigrant justice policy because one does not exist officially in the Strauss Esme system, and they said they created a number just for us.
Wow.
Which is 5111.8.
I see.
So, congratulations.
We cleaned up, we cleaned up some of the languages, language concerning the kind of nomenclature around ICE officers versus police officers, and kind of codified it so it was clear what the policy is in regard to, in effect, any officer who wants access to the buildings, or access to the kids, or the families, et cetera. And it made it, I think, made it much tighter in a number of ways and places.
So, I was particularly excited about that policy. There were a couple of typo-y kind of things that I'll just send to Ann to be fixed between first and second reading. But, the one question I did have, and I don't know if this is something that you guys discussed, was on the first page of the policy, 2A, which says, "To verify age, schools will not require a birth certificate or other documentation that exposes a student's place of birth, instead can provide a religious hospital or physician's certificate showing date of birth, an entry in a family Bible, an adoption record, or an affidavit from a parent." I was just wondering if that's been run by the attorneys and if that's all copacetic.
Not to my knowledge, but in fact, that's not one of the areas we changed. So, in other words, this is verbatim from the sample policy we got.
Right, but I don't know where the sample policy is from, and if that comports to New Jersey law.
Yeah, yeah, good question.
You know, it would just, it seems like it would be something, before we put that into policy, we should run it by our attorneys and...
Scott could...
Yeah, I can do that.
Could you do that? Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't even think of it, Darcy. That's a great question.
By the way, this policy's models after the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice sample policy.
Right, right.
So, you're right, the language is taken right off, lifted right off that policy. But, I'll check with you on all of that.
Yeah, but I would prefer to have our, you know, our school attorney look at a brand-new policy that we're potentially putting out there in the world. And on, same on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying one, I just, you know, had some housekeeping items. But, the one, I did have one thought on the equity in educational programs and services policy, especially since we were, you know, we're doing the immigrant justice policy at the same time, is, you know, we put in the laundry list of students that we want to make sure have access to our programs, but we talk about national origin, but we don't talk about immigration status. I'm wondering if we don't want to add that into the...
We could add that. Why don't you send that to Ann?
Okay.
Okay. Well, make enough...
So, I just had a little note to add immigration status in there.
In the equity in educational programs policy.
Right. And then, on the second page of that same policy that talks about equity in physical education training, and it says, "All school districts' physical education programs will be coeducational." I'm wondering if we don't also want to add health curriculum in there, because that's just a nice place to slip that right in there.
Oh, yeah. Physical, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the heading would be equity in physical and health education training. Yeah, that's a great idea.
We have a meeting on September 18th, so we could address this.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
I should probably clarify to the community, very brief, what the HIB changes were, policy changes. Really, only a couple of things were updated, as the boards are aware. The new rank now clarifies how imbalance of power plays into our determination if a HIP referral is affirmed. Our policy reflects that for the community's sake. Essentially, that means if there's some kind of a disagreement between students, or a leveraging of one student's physical physicality, I'm having a hard time describing this, but against another, in the case I presented to the board earlier. If one student who's bigger is pushing around another student who's smaller, there may be an imbalance of power. The bigger kid is leveraging his physicality against the smaller kid. While the imbalance of power might not be considered a distinguishing characteristic that plays into our factor, factoring, it is the circumstances surrounding that situation that could be determined to be a distinguishing characteristic. So, in that example, size, child's physical size could be the distinguishing characteristic that led to the imbalance of power, that would be qualified as having fulfilled one of the prompt tests to determine if a HIP investigation is affirmed. That's one thing that's in the policy. Another has to do with allowing the principal to make a determination if a HIP investigation should proceed based on whether, based on some preliminary information. And I believe those are the only major changes.
Right.
Am I correct, Mark?
That's right.
Those two basic, basically, major changes.
Those are the two big ones. And the first of those is fairly amazing that the state guidelines or policy, or the State Board of Ed guidelines on this didn't include that in the first place, because that really tied our hands in a lot of cases where there was an imbalance of power, and, you know, a big kid was pushing around a smaller kid, and you couldn't call that bullying, which is, didn't make a lot of sense to anybody on the board or outside the board. But, that's changed now, thank goodness.
So, one thought I had on the HIB policy is on page nine of the 19. It's Section E, harassment, intimidation, and bullying reporting procedure, and it kind of gets to what we spent a lot of time talking about again tonight. The second paragraph there says, "The principal or designee will inform the parents of all students involved in alleged incidents, and, as appropriate, may discuss the availability of counseling and other intervention services." Like, it's in our policy. And I put a little note even before we had this discussion tonight to say, could we add a timeframe for notification? Like, should we put something in there concretely saying, "And that has to happen within X amount of days," or "One week," or...
Okay, should we...
It's page nine of the 19, and it's the second, second paragraph under E, harassment, intimidation, and bullying reporting procedure. Because, yes, I've read all 19 pages.
Oh, my God.
Because I'm that big of a... No, I didn't read all 19 pages. I'm lying. I've read the things that were changed. I'm totally lying. Totally lying. I just read the changes.
What's a reasonable time, Scott? A week?
Yeah, I mean, I would totally...
Two weeks?
Well, HIB regs, I think, require us to follow up within five days of a referral. So, within those five days, the principal should be contacting the parent guardian. Much if you need additional language, unless you want to suggest per the requirement for a referral to be followed up, so shall the principal inform the parent or guardian within those five days about the matter.
So, can you maybe chew on that?
And...
I think that's a good idea.
Thanks, Mark.
One of the questions I had on 55...
Feel very supported.
12, page 18 and 19, approved private schools for students with disabilities. So, does this mean that we ultimately have some responsibility if there's some sort of incident of bullying for an out-of, it'll be a student who's placed in an approved private school? And if there's an incidence of bullying there, we would have to investigate it along with the private school?
Can you point to the language again?
It's page 18 and 19 in 55-12.
I think that's one of the changes in the state rules.
They kind of...
I believe so, yes. Scott may know more details, but I believe there's a lot of changes in the rules. The two major ones Scott went over, but I believe this one is included as well.
Oh, right.
So, pretty striking. This is at the very end of page 18, Scott.
Right, right.
That we have to investigate private schools, or we have to do an investigation of a complaint at a private school where we've sent the child.
Amazing, we haven't had that come up.
Well, it's not...
So, in other words, if a student is being bused to an out-of-district placement on one of our buses, we're responsible for investigating the HIP referral.
Investigating the HIP, or if it occurs at that...
But, I'm not interpreting this language to me that if it happens on-site at the out-of-district placement, even though it's one of our students, that we're responsible.
Yeah, right, we're not ultimately responsible. Looks like in coordination with the... Yeah, right. We're not ultimately responsible. It looks like in coordination with the approved privates, with their staff also, we would look into it, but, okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. I realized I had one more quick thing. And that's on page 12 of the 19. The second-to-last full paragraph on that page that's highlighted about investigations or complaints, and if we don't have a staff member, and the conflicts and all that kind of good stuff. And we did run into that a couple of times this past year. It seems like maybe we want to add language in there that there may, just as we experienced twice this past year, that there may not be a staff member that can conduct the investigation. We have to go outside, we have to hire an outside investigator.
How about, how about in the last sentence, say, "We'll appoint a staff member or outside party."
Yep.
But what, sorry, what page again?
12. Wait, 12?
Yeah, 12 is right.
12 of 19. The last, it's the last highlighted.
That's good.
Clearly, we did it anyway without it being in the policy. Okay. Anybody else have anything on policy? Nope. Okay. Thank you so much, Mark, for pinch hitting. Monique, have anything for us on equity and excellence, now that I've caught you with cookie?
It's 10 o'clock.
Monique, you just took a cookie out of your purse. Now I'd like you to talk.
Nothing to report. We have not met. We will meet in September.
Okay.
Back to my cookie.
All right. Let's see. Oh, so we can, we've already done public comment, so we're just going to go right through and do our, our voting. So curriculum and instruction. Rob, you want to move those for us?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through five.
Five, okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Semirusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Mark, the finance and facilities items, could you move those, please?
Yes, I'd like to move one through 30.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could I, we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Semirusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Can I say yes except to no or 21 or abstain?
What's your decision?
I can say no.
Okay. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Judy, could you move the personnel items for us, please?
Yes. I'm going to move items one through six, striking seven and eight, moving nine, 10, and 11, 12 with the correction, and then 13 through. Come on, there's the end. There is no end.
13 through 46.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, please, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Semirusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
So I will abstain on two, and I will say yes on the rest.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. And Mark, could you move the policies for us?
Yeah, I'd like to move numbers one and two in policies for the five different new policies for first and second reading.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Semirusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. So we will quickly go through our board liaison reports. I don't think there will probably be much to report in August, but I'm assuming we don't have anything for , Michelle's not here, so that wipes those out. Rob, do you have anything from HPEF? Okay. Commission for Universal, Universal Access. Judy?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's doing much meeting over the summer. There is something from Rebecca on the public library in the drive, if everybody got a chance to take a look at that. I have nothing. I've heard nothing about shared services committee with Borough. Ruth, any CPAC action?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay. Monique, parents of students of color?
Nothing to report, no.
Okay. No Ann here. I told you we were going to go fast. Mark?
Board of Health doesn't meet in the summer.
Okay. Green Team, Rob, of course, they're not meeting. They're not even here. I have nothing for New Jersey School Boards Delegate Assembly, although if anybody thinks of anything they want for a possible resolution, let me know. Rob, Millsix County, nothing?
No.
Wow, that was fun. So I, I think I sent everybody a text or an email or something just to say, to take a peek at the board goals. Obviously, we're not going to do anything with them tonight, but I just wanted to put this on everybody's radar that we're actually like a little behind schedule, to make any tweaks to the board goals if we were so inclined, which are always on the very end of our agendas. You know, we don't want to be tweaking these too much because these, the three main goals are what align to our strategic plan. We're still in our, what, fourth, third, fourth, or third year of our strategic plan. You know, so these are things that we've, you know, all decided on together as a board and a community, and are kind of the, you know, the targets that the administration, both, you know, district-wide and building level are, are working towards. But that said, if we're looking through some of these bullets and we see some that we've, you know, we feel are mostly completed, or something that we need to add, we can tweak those a little bit. So I'd love to have that conversation at our meeting in September, so we'll.
I would encourage the board between now and September 17th to go to our Pathway website and download the updated strategic plan. Turns out that the updated strategic plan, I sent the Honeywell out to the community about this, goals that I narrowed down to are identical to the goals that the board agreed on last year. Three goals left in our strategic plan for 1819, three goals you have here. I do think, however, that a lot of the bulleted items have either been implemented, have been put aside, or in progress. So if you go to our strategic plan website, you pull down the, the plan, you can do your own crossing out and mixing and matching as you see fit. Or I could do that for you if you'd like. It's up to, up to the board.
If there are ones that you think are checked off, I would certainly, I don't know, but anybody else, you know, you know this more intimately, certainly than any of us do. If you want to just give us a little, you know, copy this down with a little check mark next to things that you think are, you know, we're pretty solid on, and then we can, we can work from there.
I'll put it in a Google Doc, and I'll share it with the board prior to the meeting next September.
Great, thank you. Okay. So that's pretty much it for me for my president's report.
Darcy, were you going to mention the NJ SBA October meeting?
Ah, yes. So I think Janet sent us an email, sent an email to the full board earlier last week about the New Jersey School Boards Association Annual Conference, which they call Workshop, which is in October. It's like the week of what, the like 23rd?
Twenty-third.
To the fifth, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
And if anybody's interested in going for all of it, part of it, a day of it, whatever, we need to figure that out by the, by August 31st and get that to Janet, so.
And I just would again strongly recommend anyone who can go for even a day, it's extremely worthwhile. I mean, it's really worthwhile. You'll see what's happening around the state with other boards, and there's very, very good meetings that you can just pick up stuff.
Yeah, I would echo, I would echo that. I went for one night last year, and I'm hoping that I can, I'll do the same or something similar this year.
And we know a lot of, a lot of good restaurants there.
So I will definitely be going, much to my husband's chagrin, because I'll be coming off of my own conference for my job the weekend before. So I will come home on Monday and say, hi, how are you guys doing? And then take off and go to Atlantic City. So that's going to be a fun week for my husband. He's going to really like me a lot. So does anybody have anything for old business? Want to bring up? Nope. New business? Nope. Peaking at everybody. All right. So we don't have any more public unless John, you know, decides he's, you know, I think John's probably good. Nope. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody.